All right, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order.
Wanna start with roll call today?
Cody Prabelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahan. Patrick Chesky, present.
All right, uh, those that are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, virtue card reading, Pat?
Virtue card, tonight we have truthfulness. Truthfulness is being honest in your words and actions. Don't tell lies even to defend yourself. Don't listen to gossip or prejudice. See the truth for yourself. Don't try to be more than you are to impress others. Be yourself, your true self. You're practicing truthfulness when you speak only the truth. Don't let others tell you what to think. Investigate the truth for yourself. Can tell the difference between fact and fantasy. Admit it when you have made a mistake. Don't exaggerate or deceive to impress others. Affirmation, I am truthful, I speak the truth, I see the truth with my own eyes. I am content to be my true self.
Thank you, Pat. All right, Board of Education guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can use their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, arts, and athletics. Public comments. Public comments, uh, during the public comment period of the agenda, the board welcomes comments from any district resident, not a member of the board on any item not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant by state law, the board cannot engage in conversation with you, but may ask questions. The board may refer to either a staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to speak, and speakers are asked to provide their name, um, address, and topic for discussion. Um, so for tonight, virtual or in person, do we have any public comments?
My name is Stacy Kind, I live at 326 Hampton Trace, Nkusa. I have five children in the school district, and one of the things I wanted to speak on was the virtual snow days. We just experienced one. I have a high schooler, which really wasn't a big deal, she was able to be home. I have four children, two in kindergarten and two in second grade as well, two sets of twins. Um, it's, it's frustrating as a parent, I have to work, my work does not close. So we are expected to do virtual learning for our children when we can't make it. They're in daycare, um, I can tell you, I have a timeline of events here. I got at least seventeen emails from February 12th through February 15th regarding virtual learning for my children. Two had virtual Zoom sessions at 8:30 a.m. Schools did not provide devices, I have one device at home. One had it at 9:00 a.m., one had it at 9:30 a.m. This is all of the instructions that the children would have received that day from the teachers. They were told to go onto Seesaw. If they were on Seesaw for the scheduled amount of time that these teachers gave them for work, if they could have done it, I would not have had enough time in the day with one device at home for these children. It, it's just not possible. When I emailed the school, a lot of the teachers are, "We understand your frustration, but if they can't access it, that's okay." How is that okay? My kids are being counted for school, but they're not even doing anything. I got a special, um, education teacher with one of my children. She emailed me and she said she'll be available from 11 to 12 for any help. Why aren't their teachers available more? What, what's going on with this? I, I emailed Mr. Spray about this, and he, um, he stated that there was nothing that they could do at this time, and that he would see if kids call off the YMCA, would be able to help the children with their learning. Please tell me how the YMCA is trained to do learning and why the school district cannot provide it. These days aren't acceptable for any working parents or parents that just have generally a problem getting devices for their children if there's more than one. It, it doesn't work for working parents, it's frustrating. So, I got packets sent home, but ninety percent of the emails I received was, "Check out your assignments in Seesaw." It wasn't possible, my kids were in daycare, I work 8 to 4:30, they go to daycare by 7:15, don't get picked up until 5:00. So how am I supposed to do it from 5:00 to 8:00 before they have to go to bed for four of them? It's not feasible at all for any parent that has another schedule or even more than one child at home. I, I couldn't pull it off back in March when it was closed last year, it was hard. And even now, it's gonna be harder. The, I, I can't stop working for this, I have a house payment, I have a car payment. Um, I'm more than willing to leave, leave you with all of these. The, the problem I have is all these teachers, they're, they're not put together. One's technical difficulties, but we have this place in plan. Like, where are these teachers throughout the day? If they do a thirty-minute session in the morning, that's a live Zoom, who's available the rest of the day? They should be, but there's no way of contacting them unless you email them, and who knows if they're gonna respond?
Okay, guys, certainly, if you all disagree with, with your thoughts and comments, this is something that we're definitely going to, um, have to work on, especially with getting, um, computers and supplies out to each, um...
But even if they did have them, my kids wouldn't have been able to do it.
Okay.
And so, they're getting counted for attendance.
So it's more than resources, it's other areas you want?
Well, what would the, the Department of Public Instruction call this? My kids getting counted for school, but there's, they didn't get any instruction because they couldn't attend. That's not fair to the student, it's not fair to anyone.
Can I get that Stacy, now?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get that too. Um, also for virtual high school, um, my daughter was in a position, some crisis stuff going on, so I switched her to virtual earlier this year. And, um, every Wednesday, that there was a day off or a virtual day for everyone, it was considered a mental health day ninety percent of the time. No lessons were taught. It was considered to catch up on all your work. That's really not how a child's gonna learn. They have study halls, they have other things, they need instruction, especially on virtual. She barely saw a teacher on virtual. It was hard for teachers to get ahold of teachers. She struggled, thankfully she's back in the building, doing a bit better now. But I don't know how all these other kids are doing it, like this virtual mental health day every Wednesday, it's raining out, and she was told, "Go take a walk outside, clear your mind, in rain." Like, that's not acceptable. There should be teaching happening. It shouldn't just be an easy hour. That's frustrating as a parent to see. Um, if you don't have any questions, I'm gonna move on to another topic that I'm frustrated with. I have two children with IEPs, and it's getting very, very frustrating, constantly talking to them, constantly figuring out what's going on. Recently, I had a doctor call and ask how my child was doing. They said good, I had an IEP meeting, they said good. I asked the teachers for the honest truth, cuz I was thinking of a medicine change. Oh, I get a page-long email about what my child is struggling with. And not a single word was brought up in any of those other meetings or to any other professionals. It's very hard. I wanted gifted and talented for my son from the beginning of this year. Tried and tried, finally through his IEP meeting, the psychiatrist and I suggested, requested these tests, these tests were done, now he's getting tested. And it's halfway through the school year. Found out some of his behaviors are happening cuz he doesn't have enough to do cuz he finishes his work too quickly. So if this was solved sooner, we wouldn't have this issue right now. So just getting anything accomplished is very hard for me. Um, they have worked with me, Brian's been great, I spoke with Mr. Whitmore a lot, calmed me down a little bit, but it needs to be brought up. The IEPs, I'm struggling with, I have two of them, and every single time, I have to come in, I have to intervene, I have to say, "What's up, what's going on? Why am I not being told about it at this time?" I am very, very annoyed that I have to sit here and point out every time there's an error cuz my kid's struggling due to it. So I just need some help in that department. Parents need to make sure that the IEPs are being followed. I, they're not in my book, from the two kids that I have. And it's not fair that my kids have IEPs for social-emotional and they're being looked down on. They can't get tested for their gifted and talented, they can't do any of that. I have a second grader at a fifth grade math level, still stuck at the second grade work. And couldn't get graded properly at the beginning of the year because they didn't use the same math program last year, so he couldn't get a four, so we're gonna grade him at a three. Even though he's at a fifth grade level. Explanation, well, that's just the way we're doing things. That don't work.
Well, I, I appreciate and commend you for coming in and letting us know your thoughts and concerns. Uh, I have a bunch of notes here already, and we're gonna get together, uh, we'll help resolve this issue for you. Uh, and we'll be in contact with you for those, and we'll get together with the board to talk about some of these concerns we have too, so, thank you.
Okay, I'll thank you over here.
Any other public comments in person or virtual tonight? All right, uh, we're done with public comments for the night, we're gonna head into showcasing schools and student learning. Looking for a CWSA update tonight?
Yep, uh, so we had our, um, monthly meeting last night. We have our new teacher, Mr. Martling, that has started. Um, hopefully he will be a good addition to our school. Uh, we decided yesterday at our committee or council meeting that we will do a video, like an introduction video of him, so we're gonna put together questions, um, the council's gonna put together questions. We have two parents that are actual parents of CWSA students and myself, but, um, so we're gonna put together some questions for him. Uh, Mr. Black is going to edit the video, put it together, and we're gonna have a little introduction for parents because we can't do an in-person.
Sure.
Or usually we'd meet at, um, our project nights, so we can't do that. So we're gonna do, um, a little video with him. And as an introduction, we can share it with, um, the school board too if you want. And then next week, as a council, we are doing a Zoom meet and greet with him to introduce all of us to him.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So please share that, I can send that out as an update.
Yeah, yeah, so we, um, talked about that, and then we also did some, um, governance council work with, uh, Nick from the charter school, uh, the state charter school stuff, um, which was really good. So, um, we're kinda working on some of that stuff too.
Yes.
Getting our act together.
I look forward to seeing the video, thank you for the update. Anything else?
No, anything.
Awesome, thank you.
You know what, when is your first showcase? Is it, is it gonna be done differently this year?
Uh, we're not sure yet.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna hand over to overarching results, 2020 to 2021.
And Mrs. Russell's going to be our, she's our CWSA, our CWSA, our wise coordinator and teacher, and she's with us tonight, so she's going to introduce our, um, overarching results tonight. So, Mrs. Russell.
Hi there, all right, so, um, so we thought this was, because we're talking about collaboration and citizenship, we thought that this was a great time to, um, to highlight one of our families who is, who has worked on a, on a project, um, that has global implications, looking at water and, um, and the needs that people have who don't have access to good drinking water. So, um, we've got the video, Jesse, I don't really...
Yep, and this is one of our wise students learning at home.
As, as we're getting it set up, I just wanted to, to kind of talk about a little bit that we do welcome any feedback that you might have about how Wise Academy can help, you know, bring to the board and bring to others kind of the great things that our families are doing cuz they're doing some really great things at home, um, and with their students, so...
Thank you, Stacy.
Working closely with families, Wise Academy learning coaches collaborate and create learning plans that not only focus on academics, but also include social and behavioral goals. And often these goals show a strong connection with their communities and other local families. Let me introduce to you the Reed's family. Through learning about people who have inspired change, they got involved with helping others in a global way. Take a look at North Reed's and his biography project on Ryan Hjaljent, a Canadian boy who created a foundation to bring clean drinking water to those in Africa.
Oh, hello there. Now I'm reading Ryan and Jenny, well, they're brought them together. Would you like to hear the story of Ryan's life? It's a very interesting story. We live in Canada, and in many other parts of the world, people don't have clean water or Nintendo's. In fact, the water that they drink oftentimes makes them very sick, and sometimes they die. With the class, we're gonna raise money for people in need. One dollar to buy some pencils, ten dollars to buy some folders, so on and so forth, and seventy dollars to buy a towel. Yes, Ryan? I, I'll raise the seventy dollars. That's an awful lot of money, Ryan. Well, it's actually quite simple. You just go home, ask your parents, and purchase the seventy cups, and I'll bring it to you. So, Ryan thinks he can just get seventy dollars right from his mother's wallet. But little does he know, it's a lot more work than that. Oh, hi honey, what's up? Well, I need seventy dollars to build a well in Africa, so, yeah, could I have that? A billion people in Africa don't have clean water cuz you didn't help.
You're very passionate about this. If you wanna help those nice people in Africa, you're gonna have to work for them. I can make some extra chores around the house, and you can earn the money.
Okay, sounds good. I'll go, I'll get started right now. Hello? Oh, hi there. Um, so, could you help me, uh, raise money for a cause in Africa? People don't have clean water, and in Africa, and I'm trying to raise money to build a well there. Could I do some chores around the house to earn some money?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Need more help. I've been working hard to put a well in Africa, and, um, I need more money than what I have now. Would you be willing to help me earn more money to put a well in Africa? Okay, sounds good. And then, eventually, he reached his goal and put a well in a village in Uganda. And many people in Uganda had to walk many miles to get nasty lake water. And then, when Ryan put his well in Africa, they, by their school, they only had to walk a little bit to just go and go drink, um, clean water. Well, Ryan still continues, and this day on, to spread the word that people don't have water in Africa, keep on working. And Ryan's Well Foundation is still growing. They have put 1,491 wells in Africa, and now one, over one million people in Africa have clean water. And that is not the end of the story. It's long from over. And now, what are you going to do to help? You? Think about that.
Very nice video, I enjoyed watching it.
Thank you for sharing, Stacy. And thanks to family.
Okay, any other comments for overarching results before we head on here? Well, thank you again. We're gonna head on over to Nathan Swenson, uh, our student representative. Good evening, Nathan, how's it going?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good, what do you have for us this week?
Had a couple things, pretty big ticket items, I would say. Uh, blood drive, the last meeting, I get to talk about it. Uh, that will be on March 3rd, on a Wednesday, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. About forty-five slots, and we've got over half filled up, so we're doing fairly well with that. It'll be in the gym, like I said, on the 3rd. And if you wanna sign up to give blood, you can go to, just type in red cross, go to the website, uh, give blood, find a blood drive, type in our zip code, do the one at Nkusa High School, not Big Bill in library, and unless you wanna do both, but, uh, click on that, it'll list some times available. And when you click on a time, it'll ask you to sign in or create an account. Most likely, you're gonna have to create an account, so you can do that, sign up, and you'll be all good to go. And must have an appointment, no block-ins cuz of COVID, so they really won't be able to accept those. And that's pretty much the blood drive, like I said, that'll be on the 3rd. Super excited to do that, haven't done it in a while. And then chili for charity for National Honor Society, that will be March 2nd from, get a time here. You can preorder chili for that from up until February 24th, and pickup will be March 6th, that's gonna be a Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So online, we have a website you can go to, or call the high school office for more information to order clay bowls that have been made by art students, and then buy a bowl of chili to go along with that, and you must make an order ahead of time. That and the blood drive are what's being focused on for the most part. We're entering the stretch of the school year where student council particular is winding down quite a bit, so... It'll be, blood drive will be interesting, and besides that, should end the year on a good note, I think, so... Any questions about blood drive or chili for charity, anything like that?
I think all four members will all donate blood together, huh? So I could go buy it and get some chili after. Thank you, Nathan.
Great job.
Appreciate the work that you're doing here. Enjoy the rest of your, uh, school work this month.
Can we just hear from Nathan a little bit about how second semester has changed out as far as who are moving around the building? Can you just tell us about it from a student's perspective?
You've been moving around more often, I mean, I go to gym two days a week in business law every day, and math every day, so there's a lot more students that are moving around more on a daily basis. And I think that works well for me, I suppose, cuz I like to be in front of a teacher, and I know many other students like that, so... I don't think COVID has really increased exponentially as a result of that. And I think most students would say that moving around the building more often and seeing your teachers more often is beneficial in quite a few ways. So I think it's working out well, and it's definitely good for most students.
Glad to hear things are taking rather.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna head on over to our business manager, Lynn Knight.
Can we do Brian first?
Oh, did I skip him? I did, sorry, Brian.
He's got a couple of guests with him.
Okay.
I was about to say, Cody, wow, skipping over me. Um, tonight, I'm excited to introduce, um, Taylor Michael, Taylor Michaels and Elizabeth Malik. They are our two new speech and language paths to the Nkusa School District, and have been doing a wonderful job in working with our students and also taking a look at our program and saying, "What's working well, what might we be able to do different?" Seeing that as a district, we talk about inclusionary practices, so they wanna also support that work. So they're gonna talk to you a little bit about a collaboration model that they have researched and are looking to implement, and kinda just share with you the work that they're doing this year. So, Jesse, is it okay if you give me the okay to share my screen so I can put their presentation out?
Yep.
So with that, I introduce you to Elizabeth Malik and Taylor Michaels.
All right, so we are just going to share some information about the collaboration model for speech and language pathologists. So the collaboration model is a highly evidence, it's highly evidence-based, and it's supported by the American Speech Language Hearing Association, or ASHA, which is our national board. And it allows for three weeks of direct services, and then one week is dedicated to indirect services to account for all the case management activities that are required by an SLP. So this week is set up on a calendar at the beginning of each school year for each month to ensure consistency across all buildings and SLPs. And the primary objective of the model is on increasing student participation and generalization of skills. The approach is individualized, so not all students will benefit and receive services based on this model. We've adapted a decision tree to help make determinations at each student's annual IEP meeting. And it's important to note that if a student is put on this model, but they're regressing and they're not meeting their goals, a change can be made with an interim IEP meeting at any time to change their service. So this list just highlights some of the indirect services that, um, are completed within our SLP workload. And Taylor and I kinda feel like the most important to highlight, uh, based on the current caseload needs that we have, is designing and supporting individualized materials and collaborating with each other, with staff and outside agencies. And highest on the list for us right now is supporting our automated and alternative communication system users. So these are students who are mostly nonverbal, and they use a device like an iPad with a program to communicate. Um, and we program that based on their individual communication. The research shows that there are many positive outcomes of this evidence-based approach. Some of them are listed here. We feel strongly that maintaining compliance, supporting teachers and staff, and providing inclusive services to support the generalization of the skills that we work on, as well as problem-solving and collaborating to increase the student outcome, are highest on our list. So we wanna get them into speech, work on what they need to, and then, um, graduate them. So just a little bit of information, um, about why this is evidence-based for SLPs and not necessarily all special education service providers. So here's some of, um, our current data for our caseload and their needs. Um, and as you can see, our caseload numbers include a significant number of students. We are both, um, at or above fifty with varying needs across the board. Um, additionally, both initial evaluations and reevaluations take a, a good amount of time depending on the student's needs. This year has been unlike any other, um, with a number of early childhood evaluations, including... including students who are nonverbal. So again, just going back, one of the biggest considerations with implementing this model is the amount of students that we have using some type of alternative communication. And prior to us implementing that, they didn't have any functional ways to get their wants or needs met to communicate. Many of them are shining right now in their communication. You may have seen them if you're throughout the buildings. But programming the devices to be individualized, providing the direct instruction to use it, and then supporting the use of that environment, since we can't be with them all day, every day, helping the teachers and educational assistants who learn how to implement that throughout their day is another big focus of that.
And can I add one item that you guys have shared with the augmentative communication as well? Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um, one thing with this as well, that's really cool, in that work to upload vocabulary, things like that, they collaborate with the teacher to say, oh, you're on a plant unit, so we're gonna put plant vocabulary in there. So that way, the student can also still participate in what their class is learning. So there is some for conversational, where it's how are you, how's your day going? But then, there's also a huge part of that educational piece that they do that. So that way, if there are questions in class, the students can participate just like their peers in conversation. So I wanna thank Elizabeth and Taylor for coming, and we wanna open it up to questions, but we wanted to bring them forward tonight because I know typically our speech and language paths have not been to individuals that you have met at our district. So I just wanted to share some of the hard work that they're putting in to say, how can we best serve our students in the district, so.
Yeah, thank you guys for presenting. You know, we're very happy to have you here and look forward to more of the work that you guys are doing. Do you guys have any comments?
Awesome work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Brian, maybe at some point, we could show a little video of that work that goes on, the communication, that takes place, because it's hard to understand that without seeing it. We're visual learners, right? So thank you, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, ladies.
Okay, now it's.
Now it's Lit's night. Time to shine here, our business manager.
Well, I'm going to defer until later on in the agenda when I present the enrollment data.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Alright, we're gonna jump into policy governance now. OE-12 discipline. Let me read a statement here. Appropriately involve relevant stakeholders and staff in developing student discipline policy. What is the school discipline policy, and who is included in developing the policy? I know we did have some questions brought up, some pros and cons that are going good with discipline policy here. Also, ensuring that teachers, students, and parents are informed of the disciplinary expectations of students, how I proactive and reactive discipline practices that communicated with staff, parents, and students. So we reached out to the principals this week, just to share some pros and cons, and just some simple questions here on our discipline policy. I don't know, who wanted to jump in first?
Well, let's have Mr. Spray start. So let's start at the beginning. So we wanna hear about challenges and strengths right now of the discipline.
Well, I'll start with strengths right now. The thing that I thought about when that question was posed to me, what are the strengths? And the things that I thought about is, hey, we have a system where kids are learning how to be, practice cares, cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control, in that we have common beliefs and values as a staff. And there's overall a really good system in place for helping that, to help kids grow in learning behavioral expectations. So that's, feeling really good about that, and as a result of this, you know, and there are many other things too. But right now, a strength that we have as a building is that the number of behavioral incidences that we're experiencing in the building is at the lowest in five years that I've been there, in my fifth year. So we're grateful for that, and we're feeling blessed and thankful for that. The challenge, the strength, or excuse me, the challenge that we need to really focus on is maintaining that system and really establishing practices to really be intentional as a staff to make sure that we don't lose our direction and our way. And we have some things in place, but it's not solid, and that's something that we've discussed as a building.
Thank you, John. Congrats on getting that data and discipline down to the lowest in five years. That's awesome. Any comments for John for him? Alright, we'll head on over to Nathan here at AMS.
Okay, so wanted to also echo that, you know, this is a different year as far as our incidents are not just the lowest in five years, they are with any number of, a huge amount. It's just a very... Certainly, having all the precautions that we have for COVID are not creating opportunities that are there in a standard school year. And we have to recognize that a lot of, we're seeing those type of benefits with a lot more supervision than we have in other areas. And so that's, however, as I'm looking at it, you know, I was looking, I've been reviewing some data that we've been looking at, but I've got one student, for example, who last year was one of our heavy hitters between minors and majors. He had about twenty-four over the course of the year. This year, he's got five so far. And, but there's a lot of times that, one of the things that, a challenge certainly in past year, you know, we've, a strength that I have to say from past years is we've been working with restorative justice for several years to be able to help students repair damage. And it takes a lot of work, but it keeps, it limit, it greatly reduces the amount of recidivism or something happening again afterwards. And simply put, with less incidents happening, we have a lot more time to go deep on each one, therefore, as a result, it snowballs because there's less that are happening on those. Some additional strengths that we're leaning, with this, with the time that we have a lot less of this incidence, we're investing that into working with new ways to do it. Certainly, restorative justice is one way. One that we're working specifically is by, in a framework propounded by Ross Green. He talks about students can do better when they know how to do better. Getting the student collaborative involved and talking with them and hearing their side of it, not just sitting around in a room and saying, what are we gonna do about this kid? We ask the kid, and working through that. And we've been leaning into that one. Now, a challenge is, that's not easy stuff to do. That's not easy stuff for any of us. We've been trying it for a couple of years, and with starts and stops, we're starting to lean into that. We've got a group that's getting better at it, but we're just not good at it yet. And fortunately, we have, with so many less incidents of things happening, we have time to get better at it now as things will start coming back up. But we're also looking at the same, okay, hey, you know what? We're seeing a lot structurally, if we've got some people separated, maybe we keep those things going forward. You know, it's a lot of balance, but I think the more positive things than challenges right now. But a big challenge is, a lot of this is just how do we get more people working together on this? How do we get better at it? And that takes time, and that takes years. But I think part of that is also, we've been doing this type of stuff for a couple of years. We're reaping what we sowed a little bit earlier. So recognizing the work we're doing now, we're probably not gonna see the benefits of it all the way until a couple of years down the road, but hey, it's a much better position to be in than just trying to react.
Right, I agree. Thank you, Nate. Any concerns, comments for AMS?
I'm waiting.
Okay. Alright.
Address it all.
Wow. So, you know, so I think one of the things that I would call a strength is that ninety-two percent of our students in the building have had zero or one referral throughout the course of the year. So I mean, the vast majority of the students are doing what we would want and what we would hope for them to do. I think one of the challenges, a big challenge we have this year is, in our freshman class, we don't have, because of the cohort structure, the same number of adult relationships with our freshman students. And I also think we don't have the, you know, in the normal mix of the building, you have seniors and freshmen who are all interacting. And our seniors and our juniors help, to help tremendously to kind of, and not in a hazing sort of way, but show the freshmen how it's expected that they should behave within this school. One of the things that we did earlier in the year, we had our freshmen and sophomores. So we're in, we have two lunch shifts again, and we have, we had our freshmen and our sophomores eating lunch together because that was the way that class schedules worked the best to do it. And we were having a lot of issues with that freshman-sophomore lunch. And when we went to a senior-freshman lunch and a sophomore-junior lunch, we suddenly saw dramatic improvement in our freshman behavior at lunch. We also limited them to the commons where they could be. And, you know, one of the comments I heard on the first day, that again, it was not in an inappropriate way at all, but a freshman student came up to one of the seniors and said, you're sitting at my spot. The senior looked at her and said, I've been here for four years. And that was the end of that conversation. And so, you know, different things like that, that we don't have as much of this year, has certainly created, you know, a less, less, not as strong, I guess, the relationships with our freshmen would be the way that I would put it. And that's been a big challenge this year. So. Now Pat, let's hear it.
What I wanted to say was, it wasn't that many years ago that this was a very hot button on our board about the discipline, you know, everywhere. And it was like, okay, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? And I think we put the things that were put in place, and yes, they were tweaked year after year. I sat on one thing over at the middle school, their flowchart thing, I think it was. And adjustments were made. And yes, there were some times where yes, there was discipline, but mostly it's, hey, let's work it out. Let's work things out and figure out how to get along. Now, Nathan, you hit on the whole thing with the COVID thing. Maybe it's a blessing in disguise that we learned how to get along a little bit better and just work things out and work for the good, because we have to. And in that, you know, you know, I don't wanna say that it's something great, but but I just wanna thank you guys. I think you're doing, you did a great job on this. And I'm feeling a whole lot better about the discipline situation at all of our schools than I did three, four years ago.
Yeah, I wanna commend you guys too, because I, three years ago, when I started running, I think discipline was the number one topic.
That's what I'm thinking, exactly.
With all the interviews and stuff, it's come a long way. I know it's gonna be a revolving door with COVID and how things change, but the past three years, I've seen with the little tweaks, it's gotten a little bit better and better. So I wanna commend you guys on that. And I know with COVID, things will change again for next year once, you know, it will go away hopefully, but keep up some good work on that, so.
You know, and I also think that you guys, I think you all seem to realize that you haven't arrived, and you never will. It's an ongoing process, and you're gonna have to keep tweaking and adjusting and rolling with the the times as they happen. So anyways, good work, guys.
Awesome. So at this time, I'm going to push for a motion to approve GP-10, or I mean OE-12, discipline.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor, please say hi. Motion carried. Thank you. Alright, now we're gonna head over to GP-10, Conflict of Interest. Let me read that for you guys here. Alright, policy statement. Board members shall avoid conflicts of interest involving any matter pending before the board. A conflict of interest is deemed to exist when a member is confronted with an issue in which the member or a member of her or his family has a personal or financial interest or an issue or circumstance that could render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness or purpose to the public interest. Board members shall be expected to be familiar with the Wisconsin State statute, nineteen fifty-nine codes of ethics for local government officials, employees, and candidates. So looking over this and in previous board workshops and meetings, I don't think we've ever come into an issue with conflict of interest. Any concerns you wanna bring up? So I'm just gonna look for a motion right away then, to carry on for GP-10, Conflict of Interest. First and a second, all in favor, please say hi. Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Other board work. Now we're gonna head on over to Lit Knights for the enrollment update information only. Thank you.
Jesse, could I get, can I share the screen there?
Yep.
So twice a year, the district is required to count students. It's called the third Friday count and the second Friday count. And there are two distinct differences between those two counts. The third Friday count in September is very, very important because that's where we receive state aid. So all of the information that is submitted to DPI, we receive state aid on the count for September. The January count is important, but not as important as the September count. The January account is part of the formula for the state aid formula. So we had our January count, and I have a lot of information in your packet. What I would like to do tonight is just focus on the comparison between the September 2019 count and the September 2020 count. And the reason the September count is so important is because that's where we get funding. So it's important to look to see where we were and where we're going. Now, there are three areas that we look at. We look at enrollment, and that is kids in seats. This is what we determine our staffing up. Then we convert that to membership. Membership is taking all the kids that are transferring out of our district, and we're bringing them back in to count them because they are our kids. Any kids that are transferring into the district that are not residents, we take them out of the equation. And once we do all of the pluses and minuses, we come up with a membership total. And the membership total is the total that gets reported to DPI, and they calculate full-time equivalencies for our district. So table one on the screen that I'm sharing is the enrollment from last September to this September. And as you can see, we are down forty-five students, which is very significant. When we convert those over to membership, we're down forty-five students. And then when we convert that to FTEs, we are down forty-two FTEs on the students that we get needed on. So it's not good news, unfortunately. These are the things that we have to look at when we determine staffing for next year. Now, this is all kids. I also broke it down in your packet from brick and mortar and virtual. So you can see the kids in the seat that are coming to us, brick and mortar, and the kids that are actually in our live virtual academy. Now, for the January count, it's very, very similar to the September twentieth count, and I've included that information in your packet as well. But this is information that we have to use to determine how we're gonna staff our district next year. There's also some very detailed information, a lot of graphs in your packet that you can look at at your convenience, and we can certainly talk about enrollment in future board meetings if you'd like. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions right now. I know we'll definitely talk about enrollment stuff in the workshops coming forward here. But I do appreciate the packet that was sent out, I believe it was last week, very informative, so thank you for that. Anything for you guys?
And I'd like to just add that, so I'm taking these documents now and starting to have conversations with the principals and staff so that we can really make sense of and make certain that we're maximizing our staff. And, you know, eventually, we're going to have to have that. I mean, we can't, because remember, we certainly went to referendum, but that was, that we can't use those monies to make up for lost revenue with our enrollment going down. So I mean, that just makes sense, right? So I'm working on a document right now that looks at class sizes, and I've shared, I think, with you in a board update. But just making sure that we're all on the same page so that... But just making sure that we're all on the same page so that as if our enrollment continues to go down, and certainly remember we're bringing in thirty-five additional kids next year through Y's, right? But it's something we have to look at. If enrollment goes down, we're, I mean, that's, that's our, our revenue is tied to that enrollment, so.
Yeah, I know we have a lot of things that we're uh currently trying to focus on, but we need to, we need to work on, on that as well too, so. I appreciate the conversations tonight on that. Alright, thank you Lynn. Alright, so while the video was um in and out on being on live, we talked with Keith on academic excellence scholarship and uh technical excellence scholarship. We both carried those motions, uh just to give uh the live feed update there. Uh, employment and consent agenda resignation. Um, AMS forensic coach served for eight years, Milt. And then we have some new hires for CWSA, uh Michael Markling, uh AMS behavioral interventionist, Bryn Stenerson guess, and then Jase Loebner, uh junior varsity basketball coach. Would you mind reading?
Yeah, the donations. Donations. Linda and Michael Gifford, fifteen brand new pairs of shoes to AMS. Five hundred dollars from Condon Oil for NHS Science. Four hundred dollars from Rick Amton, two hundred dollars for NHS Science, two hundred dollars for the Future Trails. Hydrate Chemical Company donated a fifty-five gallon drum of hand sanitizer. Backpack for kids, uh sixty-five dollars from Bethel Lutheran Women Admissions, five hundred and thirty dollars from Romeak- Rome makers HCE, one hundred dollars from David and Carol Sonnenberg. Uh, toward the athletic complex, toward uh the additional funding. Uh, Shutter's Garden Center and Nursery donated a tree. We planted at the new athletic facility in memory of Brian Geezy. Thank you. Uh, five hundred dollars from Safeway Bus Transit, a hundred dollars Safeway Bus Transit in memory of Brian Geezy. Five hundred, five hundred and forty dollars and twenty-eight cents from Coldwell Banker Advantage. Five hundred and forty dollars and twenty-eight cents from Dr. Nikos Leonard Dukakis. This uh, this is the first installment of five, which will total uh twenty-five hundred dollars over the next five years. We thank you all for your generous generosity and your donations for our schools.
Cody, could I just mention one thing, please?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so the five hundred and forty dollars and twenty-eight cents, their original donation was five hundred dollars, but they also agreed to pay all the processing fees, so I just wanted to make note of that.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Awesome. Um, and then uh before I, before I jumped into the consent agenda for approval, uh I'm gonna keep a set of discretion for the student and family, but we um heard news on a, a terrible incident that happened to one of our students here at NHS. So I just wanted to uh back that family and student, saying that the community and district uh is keeping you in our thoughts and prayers and how we are keeping you uh in mind, so, thank you. Alright, um looking for a motion to approve uh tonight's um consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Uh, future agenda items, March sixteenth will be a regular um board meeting. Uh, policies going over R three self-directed thinkers, GP eleven, uh board member violations. Uh, Keith Johnson, NHS principal, NHS course description book. Uh, Lynn Knight, our business manager, covering compensation and the committee updates. Um, if, unless there's any other comments, I'm going to um look for a motion to adjourn. Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone, uh live and in person here tonight.